All right, well, thank you for coming. We will begin the meeting tonight at 6:00 PM. Yuba City City Council meeting for May 5th, 2020. May I have a real call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Broomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, would you please read any closed session items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session or in the prior closed sessions of the previous two weeks. Thank you.
All right, just for technical purposes. Brian back there, did that go through for the public? Okay, thank you. All right. Any public comment to any closed session items? I don't think we received any, is that correct?
None received.
All right. And see here, virtual information, governors declare state of emergency to existing California as a result of a threat to COVID-19. The governor also issued an executive order N3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health-safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the GoToWebinar application for this live broadcast. For the meeting, we will be using the questions functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On desktop computers, the questions section of the app is located at the bottom of the GoToWebinar panel that is on the right side of your screen. On mobile devices, there is a question mark on the bottom toolbar that opens the questions screen. For those who would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions portions of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Please be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. At this time, we will move forward with a invocation by Councilman Dave Shaw, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Grace Espendola.
Please stand. It's times like these that I remember that it's important to encourage one another. And we can go back in biblical history and look at the Apostle Paul, who wrote words of encouragement from a jail cell. And in modern times, we can look at Mother Teresa, who encouraged so many that she helped over the years. So with that, please encourage everyone around you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for the awesome responsibility that you've given us, as we need this, I simply put, help. We need your help and your guidance in the decisions we have to make and doing the right things for our community and our residents. And in all things, we give you the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, does anybody have any suggestions for modifications for the agenda for tonight?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
We need to pull Agenda Item 4 from the consent calendar, as I will have to recuse myself because I live too close to that piece of property.
All right. And then, City Attorney, may we be able to vote on Items 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6 as a group, and then separately vote on Number 4? Or does this require a presentation and then the full vote on Number 4 because we're removing it?
The first option is fine.
Okay, thank you. So we will go forward now with Number 9, COVID-19, excuse me, Number 1, COVID-19, Discussion and Action on Measures to Mitigate Impacts of COVID-19 Pandemic. Diana.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to be back in the council chambers. So I'm going to kind of give you an update on the two orders that Dr. Lou released last Friday on May 1st that went into effect yesterday, May 4th. The two orders are related to, one to continue to limit activities to reduce the spread of COVID-19, and the second order is to direct persons to wear face coverings with exceptions and exemptions specified. So in big, bold, red letters, right at the beginning of the order to reduce the spread, it states that all persons are still required to comply with the executive orders of the governor and the orders of the state public health officer. It also discusses non-pharmacologic interventions, which include maintaining social distancing of six feet or more from another individual as much as feasible, and when social distancing is not achievable, wear a facial covering. Practice good hygiene, regular cleaning of high-use surfaces, and not touching our faces, and then stay home when you have symptoms associated with COVID-19. The order also moves away from essential and nonessential business designations, and risk assessment is based upon contact intensity and number of contacts per a Johns Hopkins Center for Health Security Guidance, which provides a tabulation of categories of businesses based on low, medium, and high risk. Higher-risk businesses that are allowed to remain open include governmental operations, healthcare operations, public transit, and childcare facilities. And then lower-risk businesses that are allowed to open with appropriate modifications include restaurants, provided that the dining customers shall be limited to only household members per table; salon, spas, tattoo parlors, and other personal care services, provided that the interaction is less than 30 minutes; retailers, shopping malls, gyms, fitness studios, non-contact school sports; parks, walking paths, trails, dog parks, athletic fields, and other outdoor congregate settings; playgrounds, libraries, construction, real estate, and agriculture. And the construction, real estate, and agriculture are asterisked because these businesses were not specifically noted in the Johns Hopkins Guidance. So there's an operations protocol that these lower-risk businesses are supposed to fill out and place near their front entry, and through it, it's a checklist of items to protect staff health, ensure physical distancing, prevent unnecessary contact, increase sanitation, and also discuss signage that should be in place. There's also, social gatherings of more than 10 people are still prohibited. As noted previously, the effective date was May 4th at 12:01 AM, and currently, there's not an end date. It will continue until rescinded, superseded, or amended. Moving on to the order to wear face coverings, they are to be worn indoors and outdoors when social distancing cannot be achieved. However, there are some exceptions. When you're driving alone or exclusively with other members of the same family or household, children younger than two years of age, and when an individual can show either that a medical professional has advised against it, it would create a risk related to their work, such as public safety, or if you have something like mechanics where they're working with rotational machinery that you wouldn't want it to get stuck. And it should not be used by anyone who has trouble breathing or is unconscious, incapacitated, or unable to remove the covering without assistance. So if anybody has questions from business owners regarding the local public health order, there's a couple of resources. They can send an email to this email address or call this designated number. Or if somebody has a question if a business is in compliance, they can email this different email address and call this designated number. What we're really trying to do is avoid people calling our police dispatch centers with questions related to business compliance and complaints, and really direct them to these numbers. And then there's a whole flow chart that has been set up in terms of how these complaints will be addressed. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or we also have representatives of the Police and Fire Department here tonight.
Commander Baker, I'd be interested to know how things are going for you folks with, yeah, since Monday. Just briefly, it's just...
We really have not received an abnormal increase in calls related to businesses being out of compliance and/or folks not wearing face coverings within the community. There hasn't been a marked noticeable difference.
All right, so calls for service related to the COVID-19 crisis, you haven't seen a spike or anything?
Specifically related to these issues, no.
Okay, good. What can we do to help you?
We're doing good.
All right.
Any other questions from any other council members?
All right, thank you very much. Any comment, another further comment? I know we have one public comment. Any others received?
None so far.
Okay, go ahead and read that.
All right. This is from Karen Hess of Yuba City. We failed on the first day of reopening. Sam's Club and WinCo are not enforcing the requirement for customers to wear masks. These are large companies who should have the corporate expertise to comply with the complete requirements released on May 1st by both counties. When a friend asked these stores' managers why customers weren't following the mask requirements, he was told mask requirement only applied to employees. Dr. Lou's order was extremely clear on this with no ambiguity. I resent being called from the Midwest that Butte House Barber is on the NBC nightly news with only one barber wearing a face mask with at least five people in what I know is a very small shop. This makes my city look like a bunch of buffoons. I have elderly tenants who watch the news and subscribe to the Appeal Democrat. They didn't have a basic understanding of the May 4th opening. I had to print off the relevant documents from Be Prepared Sutter for them. He knew enough to have a mask, but that's it. I watched as residents in my apartment complex went in and out of their homes without even a face mask covering, pulled down below their chin so they could pull it up as they passed other residents on sidewalks, in the laundry room, or taking their dogs outside to the designated area for business to chat with other dog owners. Meanwhile, I'm at home frantically trying to help a small business get in compliance with Dr. Lou's order before reopening. We plan on following the rules, and we're scared that other local businesses not in compliance, we will be verbally attacked or worse at minimum, or lose customers because we are following the rules. I doubt that these businesses have a business protocol checklist complete and available for inspection. I have written to Governor Newsom asking him to shut us down. Go back to the drawing board. Educate and inform first. Self-certify for business isn't working. Require each business license to submit their certification in order to activate their business. Reel in the ones that are still coasting off their essential status and send inspectors out. Shut them down if they can't produce the protocol checklist in two minutes and/or demonstrate compliance. That is the only way they will learn. This pandemic is no joke. We cannot fail at this. I expect our local government to manage the public health and create a level playing field for businesses to operate and prosper. I also want overall compliance, so I'm not risking my life and limb when I stand at the front of the business and enforce the order and our protocols. And that sincerely, Karen Hess of Yuba City.
All right, thank you very much. I know we don't have anything further regarding that. We'll move on to public communication. Folks can email comments to cityclerk@yubacity.net. Oral comments by phone or in person are not currently available. And just to confirm before we move on to consent calendar, we have no other pending comments from the public?
None.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Regarding the consent calendar, we have polled, and that was my fault before, I thought there were a number correctly, we have items, consent calendar contains Items 3, 4, 5, and 6. However, we are pulling, at Mr. Shaw's request, Number 4. So if we don't have any public comment on the consent calendar, I will entertain a motion to vote on Items 3, 5, and 6.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar of 3, 5, and 6.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. And opposed? None. And now we can talk about Number 4 for this vote. Pretty easy, the consent item. I'll move to approve it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, let me grab Dave real quick, Mini.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, business items, Number 7, 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grants in the amount of $17,403. Welcome back.
Good to be back. So before the council tonight is the acceptance of the 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $17,403. With these funds, we will be using the money to pay for the interoperability system up in the Sutter Buttes Gateway Program. That includes maintenance on the radio system up there and then the vault rental for the upcoming year, actually, this past year. Part of these funds, we will be passing through to Sutter County in the amount of little over $6,000, and the city will be receiving about $10,500 to utilize for the interoperability program. This is a no-match grant, and we've been receiving this grant for many years in the past, and for the last seven or eight years, it's been utilized for this very same purpose. So the recommendation to council is to conduct a public hearing and then adopt resolutions authorizing the chief of police to accept the 2019 JAG grant, authorize the mayor to execute the associated memorandum of understanding with Sutter County, and authorize the mayor to execute the 2019 certifications and assurances document. And the final recommendation is to authorize the chief financial officer to make budget adjustments as necessary. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
All right, go ahead and open public hearing. Do you have any comment from the public?
Sorry, none received.
All right, see no comment from the public, we'll close that. And we have an option for a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to approve or adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept the 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant funding and approve expenditure recommendations. Authorize the mayor to execute the associated memorandums of understanding with Sutter County on behalf of the city, following approval by the city attorney. Authorize the mayor to execute the 2019 certifications and assurances document, and authorize the chief financial officer to make budget adjustments as necessary.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor? Aye. And opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, sir. Moving on to Item Number 8, Presentation of the Investment Report, quarter ended March 31st, 2020.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and Spencer Morrison, the Finance Director for the city of Yuba City. And tonight, I bring before you the Treasurers, I'm also the treasurer, the Treasurers Quarterly Investment Report for the quarter ending March 30th, 2020. The market value for the second quarter was 124.7 million. 113.7 million of that was in city-held funds, city-held investments, which included about 12 million in flood control agency funds, which we are the treasury for as well. We have about a $13.9 million increase from last quarter, and the notable transactions include property tax receipts, Fifth Street Bridge activity reimbursement for claims and construction, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency construction costs, and sales tax receipts, including also some wastewater treatment plant improvements and bond proceeds. Thirteen investments matured or sold, and six were purchased. The average yield sold was about 1.88, and showing how the market is declining for that first, that last quarter, is 1.21% average yield. Agency bonds and treasury bonds and city-held municipal and state bonds, corporate bonds made up about just under half of the portfolio, and the rest would be LAIF camp, which is a LAIF-like money market, sort of a investment tool, CDs, corporate paper, cash, and cash-like investments made up about 53%. So our liquidity was a lot higher. Maturity distribution you see on the screen reflects a conservative portfolio that favors anticipated declining interest rates and modest to no economic growth in the coming quarters, as well as large construction-related cash flows, mostly from the flood control wastewater treatment plant at Fifth Street Bridge. At the end of the quarter, just a note, LAIF was returning about 2% still at the end of this quarter by March 30th, but currently, it's about 1.7 and declining. That's it. Any questions for me?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. The only question I would have is going through the portfolio. Obviously, we are conservative because that's our investment policy, but looking at some of the corporate holdings we have underneath, have we been in discussions with our investment firm about looking at their bond ratings and stuff? Because some of those will inadvertently be affected. And do we have any that we should be concerned with at this point, or are we just monitoring the situation as it comes forward?
So we're actually monitoring, so we do have investment advisors, and they are looking at, we have two, and the portfolio that they manage is about equal and split, and they are monitoring constantly and looking for opportunities. So far, what we do expect is that our callable bonds will be called, and our corporate holding, anything that's these corporate bonds, will probably just end up maturing before anything happens. But of course, they're watching to see, we're all watching right now, to see what might happen, but so far, I haven't heard anything.
Okay, and should their ratings decrease, will we be looking at putting them up on the secondary market for sale? Is that what our policy typically is?
So we don't have a policy for secondary market, but what we will, our investment advisors will just propose that we sell. They'll just put a sell to me and say, hey, this is not a good opportunity anymore, we have a better opportunity. Yeah, we would unload anything that's looking worrisome.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any public comment by chance?
None so far.
All right. I would say note and file, thank you very much, Spencer. Moving on to Number 9, forego additional discretionary payment to CalPERS to pay current year general fund pension costs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Again, Spencer Morrison, City Treasurer and Finance Director. This item brought before you goes back to last fiscal, sorry, last fiscal year when we adopted the fiscal year 1920 budget. Yuba City created and funded an IRS Section 115 Pension Stabilization Fund a few years ago to increase the pension assets, which further funds the unfunded liability, smooth sharp pension cost spikes, and serves as a reserve to help during times of financial stress. The trust gives the city much more control of these assets, which adds some comfort when CalPERS is changing assumptions and experiencing big swings in investment returns. The trust balance today is $2.8 million. The adopted fiscal year 1920 budget resolution included an additional discretionary payment, we sometimes call that an ADP, of $500,000 paid to CalPERS from the trust to pay down the unfunded actuarial liability in the miscellaneous plan, which at the time sets about $37 million. Other city funds that have miscellaneous employees would have contributed an additional $338,000, so it would have been about an $838,000 contribution to the miscellaneous plan. On May 28th, council directed, this was a study, budget study session, council directed staff to hold the additional discretionary payment until after discussions by the CalPERS, the newly-formed CalPERS Unfunded Liability Committee had met and had a chance to discuss the future of that ADP. Given the COVID-19 response and uncertainties, staff recommends holding back the additional discretionary payment from the trust to provide more fiscal flexibility. Council continues to have discretion over these funds and is able to use them to pay for pension costs. These funds may be used to reimburse the general fund for pension costs already expended, in fact. Yuba City will pay over $9 million by the end of next month in pension costs to CalPERS, so we already have expended the amount required to draw down $500,000 should council decide to go that direction. There are alternatives to staff's recommendation, including making the ADP. Remember, staff's recommendation is going to be to not make the ADP, but to make the ADP, or to not make the ADP and not reimburse the general fund for pension costs already spent. So the recommendation is to direct the finance director to forego the $500,000 in additional discretionary payment from the trust. And also, we have a B, authorize the finance director to draw $500,000 from the trust to reimburse the general fund for pension costs already incurred. May entertain any questions?
Any public comment?
None received.
All right, we can go on to a motion.
Through the mayor.
Sure.
First of all, Mr. Morrison, thank you for bringing this, and with all the uncertainties facing us, I think this, in my opinion, is the right thing to do, because the state has given a lot of interest-free loans to a lot of businesses through sales tax and things that we don't know exactly how that's going to affect us. I think this is a very smart move, is you being our new finance director, to pull this back in, so thank you. And with that, I'd like to make a motion, and I move that we adopt a resolution approving the foregoing of the ADP of $500,000 from the Pension Stabilization Trust Fund to CalPERS, per approved Resolution Number 19-036 passed on June 4th, 2019, and per discussion at the May 28, 2019 budget workshop, and authorize the finance director to draw down $500,000 from the Section 115 Pension Stabilization Trust Fund for payments already submitted to CalPERS.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. And opposed? None. Thank you very much, Spencer. Number 10, Central City Specific Plan Land Use Changes.
How's everyone tonight? So it is nice to be back in the council chambers. Getting tired of looking at the Zoom meetings. So with that, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So the item before you tonight is in regards to basically changing the land use in the central city area. So in a portion of the central city area, we're working through the processes to update the general plan, update the specific plan for the central city specific plan, and then also follow that up with introducing an ordinance in a two-part process that tonight, we will introduce the ordinance and then come back at a future council meeting to request confirmation of that ordinance change to, that basically matches those land use changes. And so the area of concern tonight is basically 11.37 acres located generally on both sides of Shasta Street between Bridge and B Street. There we go. So you got... So you got Bridge Street on the north, B Street on the south. One key item to take away from this exhibit is that this area right here, the northeast corner of B Street and Shasta, is excluded from that change. And that is due to a previous action in 2018 where a proposed hotel development came forward originally and has already gone through this process. And so basically on our general plan map, what we're proposing, the existing is on the left where we have the existing designation in our general plan, which is light industrial. And then we're proposing to change that 10.39 acres to community commercial. And then the .98 acres at the corner of Boyd Street and B Street to commercial office. With that, the specific plan amendment, their land use designations are slightly different than our general plan designations. And so you'll see this existing, where they have a terminology for the light industrial and a workplace. And so we're updating the specific plan also to match the general plan amendment proposal to be a community commercial C2 zoning and then also this office, commercial office space. And then similarly, and then following on that as discussed is the zoning change. And so this is, this is basically where it gets into the weeds as far as what's allowed in those land uses, where it specifically calls out the heavy commercial activity that's existing there and changing those to the right, which would be the C2 commercial, community commercial zoning and the office over on the corner here. And so what that use, community commercial, typically it allows restaurant, hotels, more of a, it's a little higher density, it's a little higher use than a neighborhood commercial. And so most of Pluma Street is a C2 zoning. So some previous actions, as previously discussed in 2018, an item was taken before the council that specifically dealt with that hotel site where the area was updated. And then at the same time, the city added the specific plan map for the 1.85 acres along B Street. And then with that, this item was recently approved, 7-0, at the planning commission at their last February 26 meeting. So a little history on this, this is a city-initiated project. You know, it's in line with what we've been doing in the downtown area. It's really from the 90s when the specific plan was originally implemented and approved. That area was proposed to be a commercial because it's a fit for downtown that as it revitalizes and you go through the, as we, as we, the city has redeveloped the downtown Pluma Street, as we've improved the corridor, as we now have the Fifth Street Bridge, that commercial zoning really now represents that downtown starting to grow compared to the previous uses of being more of a light industrial use. It's compatible with neighbors. So the change with it being surrounded by existing commercial, it fits with the neighbors. In the specific plan criteria, it calls for designs fitting the downtown. So there are some specific design requirements that it needs to match the theme of the downtown area. The one big thing with this, though, with this C2 zoning, it will allow a drive-through facilities. And with that, that's really to go away from the originally storefront theme on Pluma Street to match the more of that C2 zoning for today's commercial on a arterial roadway. So it allows that, the drive-through option. So the environmental review, there was environmental review that was processed, environmental assessment 1913, which was an initial study mitigated declaration. It was prepared and it was included in the package. The real issue that came out of that initial study was traffic impacts with increased traffic. When you're going to more, a higher use, you're going to have more traffic. And so there's some increase in traffic. And through that, the big impacts are going to be on B Street that could be mitigated. So through them paying their proportional share of traffic impacts on B Street at Plumas, B Street at Shasta, and B Street at Boyd, they will satisfy those mitigation needs. And then with previous action on Bridge Street, the city already recognizes that Bridge Street's going to go to a level of Service F just due to the restrictions with the right-of-way, to the restrictions going into Marysville. In the short term, there's not going to be an issue with this development, but it just adds to the long-term problem that the city already has there with Bridge Street and only having two bridge crossings. So fiscal impact, this has been a city-initiated project to support the redevelopment of the downtown area. We've, it's been a longstanding transition. It's, it ties into our Feather River Mills project, it ties into the recent KFC project, and it really supports the downtown conversion. We've talked to the DBA, the DBA is supportive of the change with the idea that it brings in more businesses, brings in more people with hotels, and that zoning use is more consistent with the downtown area. And so with that, I'd like to recommend items A through C as presented in the agenda. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yep, good. Any public comment?
None received.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ben. Anybody like care to make a motion?
Oh, boy. Wow. Through the mayor.
I went with A through C.
Can we do A through C?
Through the mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A, B, and C as recommended in the staff report for the Central City Specific Plan Land Use Changes.
Second.
All right, first and second, to approve staff recommendation, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Number 11, city, excuse me, cellular water meter replacement project.
So the item before you is the award of the cellular water meter replacement project contract. So for background, cellular read meters, currently we have radio read meters, which requires at least a couple of staff members to go around on the first of every month. They do it in the middle of the night when there's less traffic, and they read all of the meters throughout the city. And so as part of this project, we would be changing out those radio read meters to cellular read meters, which literally means that they have a cell signal and we are able to download the information directly from the meters. So for some history, in January 2017, council authorized a state revolving fund application. In April of 2018, council approved the construction and solvents sale agreement. In December of 2019, council approved the use of specialized equipment from Badger Meter, which is the equipment we currently have in the ground. They also approved the project's plans and specifications and authorized staff to advertise for bids. So as part of the state revolving fund application, we were able to receive up to $4 million or 50% of the estimated $8 million project as principal forgiveness. So in regard to, there's three recommendations before you tonight. So for the contract award recommendation, A, we opened bids on April 14, 2020, received two bids, one from Professional Meters Incorporated of Morris, Illinois, and then Vanguard Utility Service of Owensboro, Kentucky. There's quite a significant difference between the two proposals, but we did follow up to check on professional meters. And this is the type of work that they do. And in the references that we've checked, they've done good work. And the engineer's estimate was $2.7 million. As part of this, contract administration inspection will be performed by Coastal and Civil Engineering, which is addressed in recommendation C. And then project construction is anticipated to begin in September of 2020 and continue through summer of 2021. So recommendation B relates to the sole source equipment purchase with Badger Meter. As I mentioned previously, we have a longtime history with Badger Meter. They are compatible with the existing equipment software. The proposal that they provided includes training, a 10-year warranty, and efficient delivery. And it, the one thing that's nice about the cellular meters is that customers will be provided a login where they can go online and see real-time information related to their water usage, they can get alerts related to leakage, and it also allows for integration with our current billing software. So the equipment purchase is $4,152,750. Recommendation C is related to the construction management and inspection. And so Coastal and Civil Engineering prepared the plans and specifications for the project. The original contract for the design engineering services was $25,000. We, council then approved an amendment of $97,000 to provide data integration analysis and project management support and engineering services during pre-construction phase and construction phase. We went back to them because we analyzed if we're changing out 16,800 meter heads in a matter of a few months, that's, that requires somebody full-time in the field coordinating with the contractor, coordinating to make sure that the information that we are transferring from the meter heads into our billing software, that it's a seamless transition. We don't want to create issues for our customers and we want to make sure that we have accurate data. And so Coastal and Civil Engineering will be responsible for making sure that that happens efficiently. And so as part of this proposal, we're recommending an increase of their contract of $255,500 for a contract total of $377,500. So in regard to the fiscal impact, the Badger Meter sole source meter purchase is the large chunk of this cost, so a little over $4 million. The construction contract is $1,384,889. We are asking for a construction change order contingency of 25%. Construction management inspection of approximately 18.5% and the city administration O&amp;M costs of 16.5% and then project management for a total project cost of about 6.5 million, of which close to 50% will be through principal forgiveness. And so just for reference, I went back and looked at what our estimate was. So this, this project is not a question of if. If we didn't do cellular meters, we would need to replace the heads with radio read meters because they're at the end of their useful life. And the cost to replace with radio head meters would have been approximately $5.2 million, of which we would not have received any principal forgiveness. So by replacing with cellular water meters, able to utilize the principal forgiveness alone, the city's portion is actually less than if we were to replace with radio read meters. So again, the total project cost is about 6.5 million. The city's remaining share of approximately 3.2 million will be funded through a low-interest loan that has an interest rate of 1.8% spread over a 10-year term. And the annual debt service was incorporated into the water rate study that was done about four years ago. And there's money currently in the capital improvement program for the project. Regards to the environmental staff did a preliminary environmental assessment and this falls under the Class 1 categorical exemption. So with that, three recommendations before you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the mayor, I don't know if you know this or not, but this project was highlighted on KFBK this morning. I don't know why they picked it up, but they did. Anyway, I think this is a good project. I like the ability for the public to be able to access in real time, which is a major change from what's going on right now. Thanks.
Definitely agree, it's good. Do we have any public comment by chance?
None received.
All right.
Okay, I'm, are we good?
This is probably another A, B, and C.
Yeah, I'll move to accept staff's recommendations in the report on A, B, and C.
Second.
All right, we have first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to number 12, groundwater wall abandonment Phase 2 project.
Okay, so for some history on this project, in 2001, the city purchased the Hillcrest Water Company, which had 16 wells. Through the recently completed water master plan, we evaluated all 16 of these wells and determined that many of them need to be abandoned. There are only three wells that we felt like we could maintain for future emergency services. And I just want to note with that, if we had, there would be costs to bring those wells back online, but we felt like the benefit of maintaining them exceeded the cost it would take to bring them back online. So for now, they sit dormant, but if we ever got into a situation where we needed to utilize them as emergency supply, it wouldn't take very long to bring them back online. The abandonment of the wells was divided into two phases. Phase one was completed in early 2020 and included eight wells. And then we're proposing wells three, four, and seven be completed as part of the Phase 2 project. The reason that these particular wells were separated out into Phase 2 is because it's a much more complex project than the other eight wells. The location of the wells, one is on, it's, it's actually, it's deceiving to say it's wells, these are wells that are located on treatment sites. And so you can see here that there's a water storage tank, backwash tank, there's filters, there's control room, chemical storage, booster pumps, a lot of onsite piping. And so to say it's a well site, it's much more than that. And there's also some contamination that needs to be addressed. And so as part of, that's one of the well sites. The next well site similarly has a water storage tank, backwash tank, again, booster pumps, control room, chemical storage, pressure tanks. And so part of the scope of work would be to remove all of the surface items, remove the subsurface piping, remove the contaminated areas, and then basically get the sites to a point that they could be disposed of as surplus property. So what we are requesting tonight is to approval of plans and specs and authorize us to bid. The proposed timeline would be to advertise for bids this month, open bids in June, and bring it back to council in July for an award. And this would be out of CAP account number 1145, which is groundwater well abandonments. The engineer's estimate's $470,000. Just on the surface, I think of, you know, two sites, $470,000, that's a lot of money. But when you look at the complexity of the two sites, there's, there's a significant amount that has to be addressed. When we sell the sites, we will be able to recoup some money. It's not going to come anywhere near the $470,000. And so at this point, I would recommend that we go ahead and advertise for bids, open bids, and see how the bids come in. And then we can evaluate when we bring the bids for council to see if this is something that we want to move forward with. The, the pitfall of not moving forward with it is that, as mentioned previously, we purchased these sites in 2001. These sites were operational for a while, but when we converted over to surface water, they were no longer utilized. And so we continue to maintain these properties. And the longer that we maintain them, they continue to be a liability to the city. And so there's a lot of benefit to, you know, clearing them, disposing of them, and having them off the books. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Diana, what is it involved with maintaining the sites?
For that, those sites, if you drive by, particularly if you, the one along Highway 99 is very visible. And if you'll notice, like, the covering is tattered. If somebody were to get on site, there's a lot of things that they could get into, weeds. We get a lot of complaints from the neighbors about weed abatement, about rodents living on the properties. And so it's more so, you have the, the physical maintenance related to the weeds and that type of thing, but then also there's, there's just a lot on site that, you know, could be, there's steel tanks and that type of thing that we'd want to address.
All right, thank you. Any public comment?
None received.
All right. Here we go again.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion on the groundwater well abandonment Phase 2 project to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the groundwater well abandonment Phase 2 project and authorize advertisements for the bids on the project.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. And we want a number 13, Feather River Mill Project Remedial Action Implementation.
So for some background on this site, so GeoSynTech, their staff has a long history with the Feather River Mill site. In 2010, they prepared environmental site assessment. In 2014, they conducted tests to determine hydrocarbon impacts to the groundwater. 2015, they prepared a remedial action plan. 2016, they prepared the remedial design remedial action work plan. And it's very easy to say these things, but the amount of work that went into that and coordinating with the state and determining the, characterizing what's on site, it was a significant amount of time and effort. And I'm glad to see that we're near the end of this 10-year investment just related to the remediation. the remediation. So as part of their scope of work for this next phase, the disposal of the site by the city and development of the site by the developer are the final phase of the project. So at the last council meeting, council approved the third amendment to the DDA with Noyen Properties. And Mr. Noyen and the company associated with that, they are ready to start remediation of the Feather River Mill site starting next week. So the remedial actions identified in the RDRA work plan need to be implemented. And so staff has acquired a proposal from Geosyntec to provide oversight of the implementation phase. So the scope of work includes quality assurance, monitoring and sampling, and data management and analysis. So you can imagine as the contractors out there excavating soil, trying to make sure that they are getting the extent of the contaminated soil, excuse me, that they are able to be our eyes and ears every single day in the field to make sure that it's being addressed. They're doing the air monitoring. And they are our insurance policy that at the end of the day, the site is going to be cleaned per the RDRA work plan and that we will get a clean closure from the state. So the fiscal impact, their proposal is 217,747, and we're requesting 24,000 in contingency. So staff is requesting a supplemental appropriation of unallocated general funds in the amount of 241,747. So with this, there are two recommendations. One is to adopt a resolution to award the contract to Geosyntec. And the second is to authorize the finance director to make the supplemental appropriation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the mayor. Thank you, Diana. I know you and I talked about this, but perhaps for the public's information, you might tell of the value of having this third party taking a look at what's going on down there and how that benefits the city.
Yeah, when you have a contaminated site, your end goal is to get clean closure from the state so that the contamination is removed, you are free to then develop the site any way that, with any land use that you see fit for the property. And so with this property, since the city, the successor agency is the owner, we are tied to this property and the contamination of it until it's cleaned. And so we, you know, went through the state to get the RDRA work plan approved, the water board approved it. And at this point in time, we're now at the stage of being able to make sure that the contaminated soil is remediated and that we can obtain that clean closure. So having this third party as the oversight, like I said, is, is an insurance policy for us to make sure that the contractor's complying with the RD, RDRA work plan. It provides assurances to the state that we are complying with the RDRA work plan, and it helps us succeed in getting that clean closure at the end of the day.
Definitely good information. And did I already ask for public comment, if any?
No, you didn't. We have none.
Said so many times. Nothing, okay. Any other questions, comments, otherwise we can go for motion.
Through the mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution awarding a professional services agreement to Geosyntec Consultants Incorporated of Rancho Cordova, California for remedial action implementation support for the Feather River Mills project in the amount of 217,747 plus 24,000 contingency with the finding that is in the best interest of the city. Also to authorize the finance director to make a supplemental appropriation of unallocated general funds in the amount of 241,747 to account number 901221-65502, Feather River Mills Site Development.
Second.
First and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And non-opposed, thank you very much. On to number 14, future agenda items, an opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you'd like to have brought back to council a little later date. Seeing none here, I'm assuming we have still no public comment? All right. So here we are at the conclusion of one of the most dynamic and exciting meetings we've ever held. Definitely, I think, fastest, which is great. Did get a lot done, though. So reports and communications, beginning with Councilmember Carr Doza.
Okay, last couple of weeks, we've, I've had no committee meetings, commission meetings, except for our council meeting every Monday night concerning the COVID-19 that we're all addressing, all as a group. And we are letting all our city residents what we are doing. And that would be about it for meetings, for events in the community. The last couple of Friday mornings, I was with our Parks Recreation Department, our rec team, and we were passing out a little, it's called playful pickup at our gap. We gave them little goodie bags concerning chalk, jump rope, hacky sacks, anything to get the kids going besides sitting there in the computer or, you know, mainly getting them outside, give them a little fun time. And the parents are really enjoying that with us being there. We will continue being there until further notice every Friday morning from nine to 11:00. So please come on down and pick up some goodies for your children. Yesterday, we were invited to the COVID-19 Task Force to their food pantry warehouse. They are located on the backside of the Kmart shopping center. They have quite the setup there, and it's the big warehouse where they're passing out food supplies they've collected to our smaller food pantries in the community. And that's, they're passing out food to keep our citizens of the community and food. And they also have refrigeration unit there now, so they'll have, in the future, milks and cheeses. So that's a great help for our community, for seniors and folks less fortunate. And then Saturday, I attended, helped collect food on a food drive for the St. Vincent de Paul. And we had quite, quite a good run. That was a Saturday morning. Picked up some food for the pantry there at St. Ana's Doors to help also take care of the community. And I just want to wish everybody a happy single de mayo, and everybody be safe out there, and we'll hopefully see you in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
And thank you. Cesspandola.
Thank you. I just, I prepared a statement because I wanted to make sure that I stayed on track. And thank you for being here, all of us together. It feels nice to be in the chamber with everyone, and I appreciate us all doing our social distancing. I'm glad that COVID-19 cases in our region have plateaued and in seeing this as a really positive and hopeful trend that continues. Dr. Liu, our By County Health Officer, released on May 4th a new order in which it outlines, and Diana mentioned that, of lower-risk businesses to open, which many have. And I'm really supportive of businesses whenever I can and helping in that area. As an example, I'm happy to say that I helped a local restaurant with our new outdoor dining policy that we have in place by our city development services. Thanks, Ben, for helping out today. To help our businesses and for consumers to have confidence in knowing that they are safe while they're out there shopping and working and doing things in our community. But I also want to say that we want to continue practicing being supportive of wearing facial covering. As you can see, we have ours here. Fiscal distancing, six feet apart, washing your hands, stay at home when feeling sick. And when going out, practice with caution and follow the safety measures. And I also recognize that we do have community members who are reluctant to go out. There was an email today that, that shared some of that. The data shows about 60, 65% are still concerned about their own safety, so I'm concerned as well. My family, my parents are older. Both of my parents fall under the high-risk category. I'm always cautious and worry about not getting anyone sick, especially mine or your loved ones. And for these reasons and many others, I practice safety measures. As we continue in these ever-changing COVID-19 and new orders are being released, as the reopening continues, please, as a community, let's continue to practice prevention and safety measures. And I thank you so much, and be safe.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like everyone else has already said, during the last several weeks, not much going on except COVID-19. We have all been well immersed in what's going on in our community. And I will say that I am very proud of our community with our leaders in both counties, Dr. Liu, all the councils involved. We've listened to our residents, we've been threading a needle, and I think we've done a really good job in threading the needle. And Dr. Liu has done a tremendous job with a scientific approach that really puts things in perspective. Now it's time that we ask our business owners and our residents alike to do exactly what she said, and that's do what she's asked. We have started the reopening, but we need everyone's help. So as, I'm not a big fan of masks myself, but look at it this way, this is the first time you can really walk into a bank with, you know, a face covering on and not meet our finest here in Yuba City. So I said that as our police chief was smiling back there. But no, we all have our part to play. And this is a time that the businesses here, that we are trying to take care of their economic health, that if we do our part, it will help the overall mental health of our community, and it'll help the physical health of our community as well with everybody doing their own part. This is a season we go through. We're well aware of the different things happening out there, and we just ask for everyone's due diligence and following through. And we will get through this. We will get through this together. So with that, with my fellow council members, we're still listening. We, I think we have the heartbeat of this city, and everything we do, you can rest assured, has the best interest of every resident that calls Yuba City home at the core of every decision we make. So just say thank you in advance, because I'm sure everyone's going to do everything they can to comply.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot's been said, and I'm going to try not to be redundant, but I think it's important to note that, that as my fellow counsel has mentioned, we've spent a lot of time and have received a lot of information. So my first thanks and update goes to, on the updates goes to our staff. All of the, the staff members of the city of Yuba City are keeping the council well-briefed on what's going on within their departments. And, and it's not just a what's happening now, but it's also a forward-looking effort so that we can address those things that continue to emerge. The only meeting outside of our regular closed-session council meetings that I attended was last Monday, where the mayor and I and our city administrator, city manager, were a part of a group that met over in Yuba County with the county administrative staff and other city representatives, electeds, and staff members, where Dr. Liu briefed us on the draft amended order that she intended to release later that week. And I was impressed with the fact that that was a very open and honest dialogue with feedback. You know, it's very difficult decisions and a place that Dr. Liu finds herself in in regards to balancing the science of what her professional training brings to the table, plus all the other things that Councilman Shaw just mentioned, which is the human wellness and the financial piece. I was very pleased when I saw her amended order come out on Friday. I think it fairly addresses the, the needs of the community, and it is based in both science from John Hopkins and also with the, the actual reality of what's going on in the city of Yuba City, as well as in our region. I do want to thank the mayor specifically. He shouldered the load of lots of press conferences and did, actually, not actually, that makes it sound like I didn't expect it, but he did a remarkable job. National news, local news, et cetera, and he represented this council and this city, I think, very professionally. So, well done. You know, at this point, I also think it's fair to, to share my personal thanks to Assemblyman Gallagher and Senator Nielsen for the efforts they're making on behalf of our community. I know that not everyone feels that way. I do. I think it, it is, means a lot to try to get these things moving forward based upon, again, the science and the realities of what's going on in our community. We are aware that Governor Newsom is not necessarily happy with what's going on here, and in fact, have become aware, though I'm not totally comfortable with the knowledge of it being accurate just yet, but I'm hearing that there, that ABC and others are in our community, meeting with our businesses. We're hearing that, and, you know, as, as this continues to develop, you can bet your council will be paying attention. With that, thank you to the residents. It, it really is each and every resident's responsibility to, to police themselves as it regards to COVID-19, the social distancing, the masks where they're required, but being also cognizant of, of what people feel in the community as well. There are different opinions out there, and just because someone has a different opinion doesn't necessarily, you know, mean that they need to be attacked. We need to address everybody's concerns. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you. And that's really is what it boils down to. You know, I can repeat everything was said. We're both, we're all in concurrence, I think, for the very most part. It's a tough situation to be in right now. This is unprecedented, as we talked about before. But I think personal accountability and responsibility does, is a huge role. Police Department, Sheriff's Department, they can't shoulder that burden trying to be the, making sure everybody wears a mask, for example. So we really have to, to count on each other. And we, our community, and we're proving, we're proud of it, that we're a By County community already, but we're really proving how much, how united we are right now because we are, we're stepping out, we're kind of emerging and filtering our way to the top on a national level for some of the decisions we've made. And I think, and I stand by those decisions and I support those decisions with our, with our fellow electeds on both sides of the river. There's many aspects in coming to the decision. We have the medical health of folks, we have the economic health of our businesses, we have the mental health of our folks. And you have all these competing objectives, at least sometimes they are, generally moving in the right direction. Where those, where those things overlap, therein lies your options. And that's where folk, the electeds, and then the higher-ups get to earn their money. That's where, that's where their decisions are made. And we might not be completely aligned with the state right now, but I think our, their numbers and our statistics support the decisions we've made, as long as people do remain accountable and police themselves. And what might be good for LA and the Bay Area doesn't necessarily work here. And we have to keep in mind that we have our economy to take care of, we have businesses that are struggling, some may never return. And that's unfortunate. If we have some latitude to make some provisions to accommodate that and prevent that and help these folks along, I think we're obligated to do so. So how this is going to play out with the difference of opinion or interpretation with our governor, we are yet to determine. However, we are, as Vice Mayor said, monitoring it essentially constantly. And we are prepared to respond and comment and act shoulder-to-solder with our counterparts locally and Assemblyman Gallagher and Senator Nielsen to come to a somewhat of an agreement or a resolution to this. Bottom line is, we want to take care of our city, take care of our people, be safe, but we don't want to, well, we do what we can to keep them whole and keep them active and in business without endangering their safety. I, I did eat at a restaurant locally on Monday, and I got to tell you, it was, I couldn't believe how clean it was. They actually had employees with masks on their hands and knees under the booth scrubbing the floor of the rag. And it was, I mean, these, these businesses are more than willing to do what it takes to go above and beyond to stay open and to, to recognize the seriousness of the virus, but yet still try to earn a living. One, one gal who owns a beauty salon, she told me she hired, actually hired a hazmat team to come in and clean her salon, top to bottom, front to back. That's above and beyond. And there's examples go on and on. And so I'm proud of these folks for stepping up. And I'm proud to be part of the community, proud to be representing our folks as a member of this city council. And I could go on, but the theme is still the same. We're, we're here, we're active, we support the decision, we support our community, and as Councilmember Shaw said, we will get through this together. That's the only way to do it. So thank you all very much. I will adjourn for now. Thank you.